This meeting of Norwood City Councils hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Gears is in Washington DC on an eighth grade trip as a chaperone. And Mr. Sankar, who is our president pro tem, is unable to be here tonight, so I ask the most senior ranking member among you to act as our clerk pro tem this evening. So, I appreciate, Mr. Clark, you doing this.
Sure, absolutely.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Here.
Mr. Clark, here. Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar. Mr. Braden.
Here.
We have six members present, so we will proceed. We have several requests to amend the agenda. Amazing. The first one is to remove the presentation of the lifesaving award. That was supposed to be on the May 23rd or May 25th agenda, so it was not to be on tonight, so we will remove that. The requests for additions are to add a resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve and then announce certificate for the general funds recreation key to cover the cost of an invoice for UMC food ministries for 2018 of $3,083.60 and declaring an emergency. That would be under introductory readings of resolutions. We would add a communication from Jim Stith regarding the resolution. We would add that under communications. But then we, I would ask that that letter be read prior to consideration of the resolution. And then, an ordinance enacting chapter 556 of the Norwood codified ordinances entitled scooter, bicycles, and remote vehicle rental businesses. Those are the requested amendments. Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that we amend the agenda as stated.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark, yes. Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next, we have the minutes of the April 9th, 2019 meeting. They were distributed by email.
Yes, sure, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark, yes. Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no request to address council on agenda items nor standing committees. So we'll move on to second reading of ordinances. And that is, an ordinance authorizing the safety service director to sell surplus real property by internet auction and to enter into an exclusive right to sell agreement with Keller Williams/Pinnacle Group to conduct the auction during calendar year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Thompson.
I move, we have the second reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, is there any discussion? Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind everyone that I'll be abstaining just because of my full-time position.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the second reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark abstain. Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
By a vote of five in favor, zero against, and one abstention, the motion carries. Please have the second reading.
Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to sell surplus real property by internet auction and to enter into an exclusive right to sell agreement with the Keller Williams Pinnacle Group to conduct the auction during calendar year 2019 and declaring an emergency.
We have no second, third reading of resolutions, so we'll move on to introductory reading of ordinances. And that is the, uh, the ordinance enacting chapter 556 of the Norwood codified ordinances entitled scooters, bicycles, and remote vehicle rental businesses. Mrs. Hanahan.
I'd like to move, we have the first reading.
Seconded by Mr. Braden, is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance is to control the bikes and the scooters that have brought into the city by outside companies. One of the companies have contracts with Xavier University, and there are dozens of these scooters and bikes throughout Ward Two and many sections of Ward One. Xavier University is also having difficulties with the scooters and bikes being illegally parked and other safety concerns. If you live in any of these wards, you'll find yourself walking around scooters and bikes parked illegally all day long or left on the streets to damage a car. If you push a stroller, walk a dog, have any kind of mobility device, you can hardly get past these things if you can get past them at all. It's really a safety issue. These scooters are also not being removed at night, and the company assured me that they would be doing this. I have several pictures on my iPhone of where they are as late as 12:44 in the morning. And our streets are dark. Many of our streets are very dark. And we do have walkers throughout. My whole ward is full of walkers, and I think they're full of walkers all over Norwood. So I think having them laying across sidewalks in the middle of the night is extremely dangerous. What this ordinance does is it gives the city the right to pick up any illegally parked scooters, bicycles, or motorized bicycles and hold them until they're reclaimed upon payment of $75. And I would like to see, I would like to see us get started on doing something with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Thompson.
I'm just, I'm not part of the committee, so is this similar to legislation that other cities have enacted to combat this sort of thing?
Mrs. Hanahan.
I'm sorry.
You're good.
Thank you, Madam President. There is all kinds of legislation out there. I mean, it varies from city to city. We are, this isn't doing anything to ban them, to limit them, anything like that at this point. And that's what we'll be looking at in my, in the Housing and Health Committee, is the agreement with the companies if we go that way. So, yeah. Mr. Moore helped me with this, and I think the language was taken from many different cities who are dealing with this right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm glad that there's put, some thought put into this. I'm curious, is it known already to the city what the parking opportunities are for the scooters? I know that the languages, like, we're concerned with when they violate. I'm not certain if we already know where they're supposed to park.
They have a list of where they're supposed to park. They're not supposed to park in the middle of drive, or in the middle of any public spaces. They can park off to the side. Actually, I have the list here.
Mrs. Hanahan, do you know, like, if they rent one of these, does all of that information come up, like, when they rent them? I don't know. I've never rented one.
I know that there's, Lime.
Just curious, if you don't know, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just, I thought that would be.
But, the companies should know who had the bike, the last.
Yeah.
One of them, and I don't know which one, Lime and Bird both have different rules, but one of them, you have to actually take a picture of where you park it, so they know you're the one who parked it in case there's an issue. And I believe that's Bird. Bird is not in Norwood right now. They have said that until we come up with an agreement with them, they're going to stay out of Norwood. Lime has an agreement with Xavier, or Xavier University, and that's why we're seeing so many.
Thank you.
There is, oh, I have so many. I'm not going to go through these here, but what, if you, the Lime bike does, or the kids all have to watch a video, they're told where they can and can't park. And I think to even, to get your license or to get your, and you guys, somebody else might know this different, you do have to watch and you have to check where you parked it.
Mr. Bonzel.
I don't want to speak for Ms. Stevenson, but I have a follow-up question that may pertain to this. Where, I mean, I know that where they, I know where Lime and Bird essentially want people to park, but is there any actual legal places that they're, they can park today? Like, I'm talking about more like Norwood law or, you know, ordinances, not necessarily where Lime and Bird want them. Like, essentially, where are they supposed to be parked today, or are they even allowed to though?
They're not supposed to be on sidewalks, and they're parked there all the time. They, I know they have nest, and they were okay, like, in front of some of the businesses, whereas, I guess it's called the furniture area. Oh, may I ask Mr. Moore that?
Mr. Moore.
Isn't it called the furniture, what's it called where they're on, between the sidewalk and the street? Like, on Montgomery Road?
Between the side, because the, Montgomery Road, the sidewalk goes all the way to the street.
I know. But after this, there's, I have so much here. Lime shall instruct users not to park mobility devices in any other location than upon the city sidewalk in such a manner as to afford the least obstruction of pedestrian traffic and provide the minimum of a three-foot clearance for pedestrians. Which doesn't do us any good here. Because I believe our sidewalks are only three feet. No, I do not know exactly where they're supposed to park. All I know is they, at this, oh, I shouldn't say that. At this point, they're parking across the sidewalk where people can't get through, and they know they can't do that. It's a safety issue.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. So I have not had a chance to review the specific language in the ordinance. I knew, we knew that eventually it was coming, so, you know, I don't have any real specific thoughts about it until I get more time to review it, which is why it's good that we're doing the first reading tonight. Essentially, though, the effect of the ordinance is basically not going to allow Lime or Bird to place any scooters in Norwood until they have an agreement first. Is that correct?
No. No. We really, they have an agreement with Xavier. Once they leave Xavier, we can't say where they can go. We can end up banning them. But Lime was the one who, or not Lime, I'm sorry, Bird was the one who said they don't even want to bring them in here until they have an agreement with us.
Mr. Thompson.
I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Bonzel, but I think where you're heading is, it doesn't look like we've provided, even though we're not banning them, and I know that's not the intention, it doesn't look like in here from where it's scanned that we've defined a place where they are allowed to have them all Xavier property. So they've got the agreement with Xavier, I get that. Somebody takes one from Xavier to their apartment and wherever it would do, and wants to leave it somewhere appropriate. I don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I've been looking for it, I don't see somewhere in here where it defines an appropriate place for them to be. I agree in principle with what's being done here. I just want to make sure, like, it's not like we're, we're not going to say we're going to ban them, so what we'll say is you're not allowed to park them in Norwood. That's, in a sense, we're banning them, so I just want to make sure we're not doing that.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam.
Mr. Thompson is essentially correct in the way this is worded. The idea being you can't park on city property. You can park on private property if you have the permission of the person who owns that property. So, if you rent a Bird scooter and take it, or if you're the tenant, if you rent a scooter or a bike and you take it home, you can park it on your own property, on that property, and that's fine. There's a whole lot of different ways to go. There's some that say they have to be, you know, on the street, it has to be parked here, you can leave them over here, you can leave them over there. And based on kind of the comments I was getting on what can we do to put something together, it was, my sense was the, the issue is, they just showed up, and it's not like just people are riding them and leaving them. The companies are putting them in nests in groups of three and four on corners on city sidewalks. And not necessarily in a way that you can get by them either on some of those corners. And so, the approach I took in doing draft language, which was, I don't know, in October, I think, that I did a first version, that I did like a first pass of this, was to say that, no, you can't, you know, you can't use the city sidewalks or rights of way or streets to leave these. If you leave them, we're going to treat them like we would if there was a shopping cart left there. And I pulled part of this from the shopping cart ordinance we have. And the city can come and pick them up and hang on to them, and you can pay to come and pick them up if you want to do that, unless you have an agreement. Because, you know, part of this is that we're just going to start this business, and all the externalities, all of the external costs, all of the burdens are going to fall on, we don't really care. We're just going to use the sidewalks because we want to. We're going to just use, you know, have them parked in front of streets and driveways and yards just because we want to, and we're not going to ask anybody ahead of time. So that's kind of the approach this took. There are 100 alternatives to this. And, you know, but when the committee sat down and talked about it, and Ms. Hanahan contacted me last week and said, here's a few changes I'd like to see in here, I think we'll go with this option instead of this, because the, kind of the final agreement, some of that stuff, I had some alternative language. And so, I apologize that it wasn't to you earlier, but it just took us a while in the Law Department to go through it and get it taken care of with some of the other stuff going on. But there's 100 different ways to go with this. The basic idea here is, no, you can't, if you leave them on city property or rights of way, we're, we might come and pick them up, and good luck to you getting them back when you can find somebody in the office and want to pay the 75 bucks a pop. It's kind of just the way that this is approached, until you work out an agreement with the city to operate here. There's other ways to go. Certainly, we could have an ordinance that says you can't park them on sidewalks, or you can only park them on the sidewalks that this wide, or you have to leave, wherever you park them, you got to leave this thing, or you can use the devil strip or whatever. Devil strip is a term I'd never heard till I moved to Norwood, but whatever the term was of that I used before I moved here. You know, it could be, you know, any number of alternatives. I think the major problem is they're just, if they're just left, and they're just left there, and they're, or they're intentionally parked by the company, three and four that are blocking sidewalks, I think for the most part it's a practical matter, that's when people will call and complain, and they might get, might be picked up. And so, that's just the approach of this one. Again, there's 100 different ways to approach it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We'll follow up.
Yeah, thanks. And to me, it makes, it makes sense. If they've got a deal with Xavier and they want to nest their scooters on Xavier's property, that's fine. I mean, as a matter of, if a student is coming home at night or something, wanted to do that, because riding one of those is also a matter of potential safety, you know, to get from one place to another. But, the fact that you can leave it on your sidewalk as opposed to the city sidewalk, you know, until morning and drive it back or whatever, I think, kind of solves that driving it and leaving it on public property. We're okay with them leaving it on private property, then, same fine.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I just want to, I want to thank Ms. Hanahan for getting out in front of this. She, she's done some homework, and so someone had to get out in front of this. And just so I'm clear, help me, help me understand, these aren't for, these aren't for children. These are, these go pretty fast. You have to be a licensed driver, right? Like, you download that app, and I think you have to have a license to get on these. So, we're not talking about for children, we're talking about licensed drivers that get on these things, and they should be accountable for where they put them. So, I just, like, you know, they're bikes, they're scooters, so why would we mess with some bikes and scooters? But these aren't children, these are, you need to be licensed, so you should be, use these in a way that, that is appropriate. And so, I just, just want to make, am I clear on that? We have to be licensed drivers for these, correct?
I'm not certain.
Okay. So anyway, that's my understanding.
Mr. Moore, do you know?
We're talking about kids with scooters, I get it, but we're talking about adults that leave these around, they, you know, put them in a safe place. So, I think we, you know, this is appropriate to put something on the books.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mrs. Hanahan.
I decided to get started on this because I was doing walks the other day. I walked the neighborhood a whole lot, and I was over in that area, and in the Xavier area, and there were several big parties going on. And they didn't take them up at the driveway. They didn't put them on the grass. There were spots where you'd have six or seven of them just laying right there in front of the, and they don't even leave them standing up. They throw them down, which I don't understand. And, you know, if you're in a mobility, you know, device or a wheelchair, there's no way you're going to get around those.
Or if you're a klutz.
And I just wanted to get started on doing something. And I did talk to both companies, or, no, I'm sorry, I did talk to the one company, Lime, where we're having, I see the bigger issue right now, and they knew this was coming up on council tonight, and I told them I was hoping I'd have it here, and nobody's here.
Thank you, Ms. Hanahan. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of points I wanted to address. First, it was said by somebody that we can't control, so it's like, if, they rent them in Cincinnati, in the city of Cincinnati, at Xavier, you know, on the, at Xavier, and they ride them here, that we can't control where they leave them. And I actually think that's probably incorrect. I've seen on some of those apps before that there's actually zones, there's a zone downtown near the Federal Reserve or somewhere there that's blocked off, that literally has like red lines through it, says you're not allowed to leave your stuff here. So, if truly the city wanted to not have them, like, I think it's our prerogative to say that they are not allowed, and then obstruct the companies, and they can probably do that little thing where people aren't allowed to deposit them here, or probably the riders will get charged. I'm not saying we go that way, but I just, I think we have a little bit more control, I think, than kind of was hinted at when it comes to that. I think there could be a happy medium, though. I did have concern about section two, so 566.02B. It looks like, it looks like this section specifically, it first talks about, "It shall be the duty of every remote vehicle rental business to collect and store all scooters, bicycles, or motorized bicycles every night." But then in the second sentence, it's not going to read it, it's really long, it just essentially says that any scooter, bicycle, or motorized bicycle that is found unattended on, you know, on various public things that has it listed, shall constitute a prima facie violation of the section. Doesn't mention anything about finding, that the, about the vehicles being there at night there, it just says they're not allowed to be there at all. So, it might just be something to add in, a clarification there, if it needs to be had. I would defer to Law Director, though, if he thinks it's fine the way it is, I'm fine with that, too.
Mr. Moore.
Madam President, Mr. Bonzel is exactly right, and the question would be between what hours? I mean, that's kind of the hard thing, is like, if they're picking them up, want them picked up every night, and, but what time? Is it after 11:00? Is it after 2:00? Is it after 4:00? Is it, and so it's, it's, that is one of those kind of open-ended things, the idea being that, well, if they're just laying there on the sidewalk, well, we're just assuming that you're in violation, that you didn't pick them up. It's kind of the way it's written, that's true.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other discussion?
Can you just tell me where you were reading at? I'm trying to find it.
It's section, uh...
I don't see section two.
566.02B.
Point 02B.
It's on the second page.
On the second page.
Okay, okay.
Under section 566.02.
Okay, thank you.
Sub B, as in boy.
It's the second sentence, because any such scooter, and then it goes on and on and on, and the way lawyers like to list every possible permutation.
The first sentence says that they shall be removed every night, but it doesn't say what time. And then it goes on and on, and says, "When you find them there, it shall constitute prima facia evidence of the section."
And boy, you're readers. This is my office.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, I don't have a specific suggestion as the time, if there should be a time put there, so, I mean, I would defer to the chair of that committee to, if there, if there wants to be some kind of thing added, I'll defer to that. I mean, I think it's probably fine either way, because it says that they can't actually pick them up. Well, actually, I'm wrong. I thought it said that they can't pick them up unless it's at night, but actually, it just says in the next section that, it just gives permission for them to be picked up if they're found in the right of way. So, if we want it to be just at night only, or at least, if we wanted to truly allow people to bring them into the city and leave them on the sidewalk, or leave them wherever, as long as they're parked, whatever correctly is, then we probably want to amend this section. If we don't want to allow them at all, even people to deposit them, I think this section would cover that.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Personally, my opinion is, I mean, I don't, if they're here, and even if they're parked on the sidewalk, well, I guess I can't say that. So that they're not blocking pedestrian traffic, or, the problem, the big problem is when they block pedestrian traffic. And the hope of this ordinance is, hey, we take away, you know, a bunch of these, then the company, I think, is going to be stricter on how the, how these kids park these, and maybe say, hey, you don't park them right, we're, you know, we're going to take away the privilege of you using these. Just banning them, I, that's something we can talk about in committee. But I didn't want to go, you know, I was just trying to find a way to get somebody to take some responsibility for these bikes laying all over the ground.
Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the discussion. Mr. Bonzel, I appreciate you asking your follow-up, and you, Mr. Thompson, as well. I think my immediate reflections are, I would appreciate if we could provide more guidance on what is permissible and what repercussions the city might consider when those guidelines are violated. A couple of thoughts that come to mind that might help us, and again, as said, would defer to the committee chair. Is it possible to send this draft back to the committee and invite Xavier to come talk about what they are already doing that we might complement? And/or find out, I think you, I think there was mentioned that there is a contact at the company, what enforcement they currently have as well. One thought that is coming to mind as a non-user, is it possible that we would be putting in place guidelines that would actually prohibit the use of the business, even though we're not restricting the business from being here? So for instance, can I, can I rent a scooter at 2:00 AM? And if so, would we then need to consider if we're asking those to be gone at a time when I could actually be using it? So, I would love for opportunity for more discussion. So, my ask is, could it maybe go back into committee to consider this draft?
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just like to answer that. I have been speaking with Xavier and the Lime contacts. Xavier is not doing anything at this point. They're waiting to see what Norwood does. And I will, I can definitely, I was going to have, and they've agreed, Lime, I get these birds, these birds, these bikes all mixed up. I definitely plan on having meetings with them on an agreement, but as far as, I just, I just thought it was something, oh, and I, that we needed to get moving on. To park a Lime, it says here, "Lime can be parked anywhere it is safe to park a bicycle. Do not block sidewalks, service ramps, bus stops, and shop entrances." Please refer to parking tutorial here. And they have several of those tutorials on both sites.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, I guess it would be nice, like, potentially, if the Lime person could be at a count, at a meeting if we're not going to put it in the committee. I don't have a preference either way, whether, where it goes. I will say, too, though, that no matter what we do here, all of, at the very end, it says that the safety service director with the approval of Norwood City Council may enter into an agreement with a person or his agent engaged in one of these businesses for the use of designated nesting areas on public property or in the public right of way. So essentially, and then it says some of the things that can be added to it, like payment of fees, limitation of number of times. Essentially, what we, just to make sure that we reiterate this, this is, if we do pass this, it's only until essentially we get an agreement with one of these companies. So it's basically saying, if you don't have an agreement with us, you really can't operate here. But this still allows the city to enter into an agreement with one of these companies to actually have, to start getting money, revenue, to set specific restrictions or what have you. And the council would have to approve that. So no, no matter what we do here, I feel like it doesn't really matter because these businesses probably shouldn't even be operating anyways until they can get some kind of an agreement with the city to, so that we can get some revenue and ensure that everything's done safely.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the first reading. Call the rule, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
The vote of six to nothing, the motion carries. Please have the first reading.
Ordinance in acting, Chapter 556 of the Norwood Codified Ordinances entitled Scooters, Bicycles, and Remote Vehicle Rental Businesses.
Next is consideration of a resolution. But we will read the letter from Mr. Stith first regarding this resolution prior to acting on it. Go ahead. Yeah, thank you.
This is from James B. Stith, the second City Auditor. Dear City Council members, In the past few weeks, it has come to our attention that in 2018, an agreement was entered into by a city employee committing the city to expenses not approved by this office, City Council, the Safety Service Director, or the Fiscal Emergency Commission. In 2018, the Recreation Department head signed an agreement committing the city to an expense of $3,083.60. This individual did not have the authority or certification to make such an agreement and appears to have never sought appropriate authorization. The agreement entered into by the head of the Recreation Department violates ORC 5705.41 and 5705.01, which requires appropriations to be made by City Council and a certificate or purchase order be approved by the Auditor's Office. This agreement was signed without the authorization to do so, and the city may now be liable for the amount of $3,083. Due to the amount of the liability and the fact that it was incurred in a previous year, the approval to pay this liability must be made by City Council. Such approval requires a resolution approving a then-announced certificate for a 2018 expense totaled above to be paid in 2019. The attached copies of documents provided by the Law Department show the following. On May 30, 2018, the attached agreement was signed by the head of the Recreation Department. This agreement was not reviewed by the Law Department nor approved by the Safety Service Director. No purchase order was applied for or obtained, and no funds were appropriated for such an agreement. Multiple emails were sent between the agreement organization and the Recreation Department discussing costs for additional services. An invoice were sent to the Recreation Department on August 13, 2018, which was not submitted to the Auditor's Office as required by law. This is a violation of state law which carries serious consequences. ORC 5705.45, a copy of which is attached to this letter, indicates that expenses incurred by such a violation become the financial responsibility of the employee. If council agrees to cover the expense, a citizen may request collection by the Law Department or the County Prosecutor or may file a suit in their own name on behalf of the citizens for such collection. This is a case of the taxpayer's money being misused and is a violation of not only appropriations but also the fiscal emergency plan. In recent past, it has been the recommendation of the State Auditors that such violators be held accountable for the funds they misuse. I request that, in its service, the citizens of Norwood, City Council consider an official reprimand and in accordance with ORC, holding the offending employee accountable for the liability wrongfully incurred either partially or in whole. I understand that a decision concerning enforcement of the ORC may take time, but I do request at least that the resolution authorizing payment be passed as soon as possible as we have been informed that the outstanding liability may affect our federal grant status. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call me directly. Sincerely, Jim Stith, Auditor, City of Norwood.
Your pleasure. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I've had a couple of conversations with the Auditor about this and it's been very frustrating, especially reading through the email.
Is there, can we have a motion to, like, receive and file the letter and then have discussion or?
Sure. Yeah, that'd be fine. Yep, so I guess I'd make a motion to receive and file the letter.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Now, any discussion? Mr. Bonzel, it's your motion. Thank you.
Thank you for the correction, Madam President. So, you know, kind of reading through this, reading through some of the emails, it's kind of frustrating because, you know, there, it was obvious that there was, you know, there was, it was known that there would be costs that would be incurred to the city. It appears obvious to me. You know, I guess we can, you know, when we get to the resolution, the thing that really, I guess, we need to ensure happens is that we have, we're going to end up having to pay this invoice. Talking to the Auditor and talking to the President of Council before this, that we're going to incur penalties or potentially not be able to get certain grants from the federal government in the future if we don't end up paying them. However, I'm looking forward to the discussion about what we do after that to try to recoup the costs that was incurred without permission.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other discussion? Mr. Braden?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to get a chance to talk to the head of the Recreation Department about this. So it's my understanding that we have to decide if, I understand we have to pay this. But then, as far as reprimand, that's up to us? It's not up to Mr., it's not to the mayor for that? Is that our responsibility? I'm just curious.
Mr. Moore?
Because we are...
Can you help us out? At some point in this letter, it says that the Law Department was not approved. Somewhere it references your department. It says, "If council agrees to cover the expenses, a citizen may request collection by the Law Department or the County Prosecutor may file a lawsuit on the run." Is it council's respons, is it the Safety Service Director's responsibility? She's not our employee, technically. Can you give us some guidance here?
Yeah, the mayor, the Service Safety Director would be the appointing authority. So that's the first point of discipline. I think that the Auditor may be asking council to issue a reprimand to put it on the public record. I think that's what he's getting at there. As far as recoupment, yeah, the city can sue the Recreation Director to get the money back for entering a contract that was not authorized. And, but the question is whether council wants to do that or whether council wants to pursue something as, to send a signal that, okay, we're going to get 10% back. We're going to, we want to get 25% back. We want to get 50% back just to drive home the fact that you cannot, you can't enter, there are very few people with the city that work for the city that can enter contracts. And they certainly can't encumber money. They can't order things without a purchase order. And that is, I think that's the message the Auditor wants to sign.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Braden?
Thank you. Just a follow-up on, so just to be clear, we're talking about lunches for children. This looks like she's entered into agreement to feed, feed kids at a couple, for 50, 50 kids for I don't know how many times, but, so basically she entered an agreement to, or the head of the Recreation has, has, went into an agreement with the company to feed lunches to, to some of the youth in the community is what it looks like to me. So that's not an awful thing. But when it comes to, you know, payment in the situation I am in, so I need more information. So we're talking about lunches here. I just, I want to get that out.
Madam President, if I could?
Yes.
And I agree that that, what it's being, it's not like somebody was, I'm going to get new tires on my truck or I'm not, you know what I mean? If there were...
Yes, sir.
It's, it's not, it's hard to say it's not a worthwhile cause. At the same time, if the Police Department orders bullets or the City Garage ordered tires and there's not a purchase order to cover that or if either, any department enters, oh, we're going to sign this contract for training for paramedics the city's going to be in the hook for, for three grand, and they don't have the authority to do it and there's no purchase order in place, that completely undermines the whole way financial systems in cities are set up. And this is how, this is the number one reason for that is, okay, council has passed a budget, has passed, here's a certain amount that's in this department's key and that department's budget. The only way that's tracked to make sure, first, that there's enough in there to cover it and, second, that it actually gets paid when the bill comes in, is that you get the purchase order first. Otherwise, it's, I'm just going to order whatever it is I want and then, okay, I was, you know, there's, there's $10,000 in this key and I ordered $60,000 worth of car parts. It's, well, the city ordered it, it's the vendor, it's not the vendor's fault, really. And so, but that's where you run into problems. And that's how, not so much Norwood, but other places, really. That's one of the biggest things that tends to feed into being stuck in fiscal emergency is that lack of fiscal and financial accountability and financial process. And that's the real concern here. It's not the, whatever it was that was contracted for, but that's the real concern.
And I can tell you that the Financial Commission has looked at the policies and procedures of the, the representatives from the state of Ohio met with each department and they went over how they do things, like how, and there's a, there's a written policy, there's written policies and there's state law that says this is how you do it. And so they are certainly working on updating those written policies so that no one has any question. But they met with them as part of the review, the administrative review of how the finances are handled. And I think that might have been when it came up. I don't know. I'm not certain.
I'd like to follow up, please.
Yes, Mr. Braden?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. So I guess my next question would be, I mean, maybe this, maybe she overlooked this or, is there a history here? Or is this something that just happened? Or is there some sort of history? I guess that would be the next thing was, if you're asking, you know, is this, is this a pattern? Anybody got any input on that? Or is this something that just happened? That was just an accident, maybe?
Oh, I can't wait to hear the social media about this.
You don't like that?
I've heard rumors, but I don't want to, I don't want to spread butter on toast. Let's just go ahead and get it out there. Now, I'm not going to comment on that until I know for certain. I've heard rumors, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to comment. I don't know, and I don't know that Mr. Moore knows.
The reason why I ask...
We could maybe ask Mr. Stith that when he's...
I'll tell you, the reason why I ask, the reason why I ask. I don't, I don't want to keep going. But the reason why I ask is because in this paperwork, we're being asked accountability. So that's all.
I think that what Mr. Stith is asking tonight is that we pass the resolution and that we take some time to consider consequences in the future.
Sorry, absolutely.
That's my understanding of it, so. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. That's what I was going to say. I think, you know, Mr. Stith is asking us to go ahead and approve this resolution. I, too, would like to look into this a little bit more. I agree with Mr. Braden that it is a worthy cause, but we do have laws and rules that we have to follow. And I think that's, you know, the situ, I mean, we've all sat in meetings. We know the situation we're in, and I think it's very frustrating that this would happen. I don't know how it could be an oversight with all the meetings that the different department heads have sat in and they know the process and the history of this employee being here as long as this employee has been here. I just think they should have known the process. But again, I do, I would like more time to really delve into this and speak with the different parties involved to see how this happened and ensure that this never happens again, especially with the situation we're in right now.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Thompson?
I'm going to sound like a broken record here, probably, but it's frustrating because I think honestly, if an apartment head came to us and said, "For $3,000, I can feed kids all summer long at the pool," we'd say, "Yeah, we'll find the money for that." So it's frustrating that it happens. Also, I'm a bit frustrated because this is a very public place where this was going on and nobody who keeps an eye on these sorts of things raised a red flag that, hey, there's somebody providing a service in a public place. And I don't think that there's been any kind of PO about that. I mean, I was there, I knew what was going on, but I just assumed that it was taken care of. I'm sure a lot of people would, would think that. But it's, it wasn't a hidden event. It was kind of like you knew that that was happening. And I, I'm surprised that people in the administration didn't know that that was happening until now.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I've talked to several people about this today, and I believe we really do need to get this passed. We need to pass it. We need to pay it or else we could lose federal funding if we don't. And that's pretty important and then deal with everything else after that. I would like to ask, though, as I'm reading this agreement, it appears that it's only serving a certain group of people under age, kids who are under the age of 18 and a certain group of them. And it's saying Saturday and Sunday are the days this is being done. And then you look at 50 kids, Saturday and Sunday, and the rules are, it has to be supervised during the meals. Who was supervising? What was going on? Where was this being done? I think there are a lot, oh, you've got that.
I'd like to correct you. It's actually says it's being done Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
But it went up, I know what you're saying.
It looks like the rest are all scratched out and they left over.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, I'm sorry, that makes much more sense now. Okay, yeah, mine is scratched out.
I understand the confusion, though. I thought that at first as well.
So between 12:15 and 1:15 for five days a week. You had 50 kids somewhere being fed.
Up to, yeah.
Up to 50 kids being fed.
Yes. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question for the Law Director, if I may. On the second page of the letter we received from the Auditor, in the first paragraph, there is a reference to ORC 5705.45. And then the following sentence says, "If council agrees to cover the expense, a citizen may request collection by the Law Department or the County Prosecutor or may file a suit in their own name on behalf of the citizens for collection." I have a couple of questions about the implications of that statement and how it actually applies. My first question is, does this give a citizen the autonomy to file a claim against the individual? Or would this be a claim against the city is my first question?
Mr. Moore?
I'm going to, just the way I read it is that it works like corporate law, that a shareholder can file on, can sue somebody else on behalf of the corporation. I think that's the way this is set up so that somebody can, a taxpayer can say, "Hey, wait a minute. This city employee did this, they're really, they should be on the hook for this. So I want the city to sue them and collect that money, get that money back." If the city does not, then that individual can sue on the city's behalf to recover that money for the city, is the way I understand it.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. In that scenario, follow-up, if a judgment were made for that individual citizen, where would those funds go?
Mr. Moore?
They would go to reimburse the city.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
And a final question in this line of reasoning. I understand that there is an opportunity for the council to consider a type of reprimand and enforcement of the code where the individual would be potentially liable for the sum total. If the resolution that's been proposed tonight is passed and this council were to, at a later date, decide to go the path of holding the individual financially responsible in part or in whole, does that mitigate or change the opportunity for an individual to bring a suit as well?
Yes, it would. It would, the idea being that if the city's not going to do anything about it, then taxpayers ought to be able to. I think that code section was written with the sense that there would be much bigger dollar amounts involved. But that's the basic idea, that if the city, and there, there's a lot of gray area. I don't know if there have been any, I'm not sure how many cases there have really been under that. I'm just kind of analogizing to corporate law, which usually involves much, much bigger dollar amounts. But the idea being that if the city pursues it or says, well, we're going to, you know, we can sue this or we're going to settle this potential lawsuit for this amount, that would kind of, the city does something that prevents the taxpayer from being able to, to do that. The idea is that if the city's going to fall down on the job, then the taxpayer in this kind of situation should be able to step up and make sure the city does its job.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. I think this might actually be the final one, then, um, for the Law Director again. What is the, um, what could you advise as a timeframe in which this council decide whether or not it's gonna take action?
Mr. Moore?
Um, the outside timeframe would be, I don't know what the statute of limitations would be. So, I would recommend finding, at, at least some kind of inquiry to find out, did they think that there was a purchase order that covered this? Did they, you know, of the circumstances going on, however long that takes, I couldn't tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I think that remark is helpful, but it does beg another question. Uh, Madam President, you shared earlier, this is not our employee, and so I'm wondering, in order for this council to be made more aware of the type of information Mr. Moore was just alluding to, do we need to request a letter, be written and drafted, to collect that information at this point in time?
Certainly, if you wanna request that we do that, is that, if, are you asking if the administration is going to take action? Is that what you're asking for?
I'm asking as a process question. I know that there's information to be had, but since it's not our employee, it seemed like there may have been something else going on. I'm just not clear who's on first at this point. So, that's my question to you.
Who's on first? I don't know. Um, I was made aware of this late Sunday evening. Um, Mr. Stith and I had a conversation. Um, he read me his letter, I advised him to tone it down a little bit, he toned it down a little bit. Um, um, when he got back to me late yesterday, I thought that it was important that you all know about this ahead of time, and so I consulted with the Law Department to make sure that I could get you this information, um, ahead of time, so that you would at least have some indication that this was coming. And so, um, we did send this out by email. I, I don't know any more than you do. I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna receive a file and a place in a committee of the whole, we can ask the Mayor and Safety Service Director to come here and the individual involved, and we can get to the bottom of it, if that would resolve it. At least we can get all of the information. Um, it might be a suggestion, just a suggestion, it might be something that could, um, at least indicate that we are considering something, or at least getting the correct information so that we can proceed in some manner. If that's helpful, if that answered your question?
That is, I, thank you.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so, I mean, to me, when I read the section 5705 dot four five, uh, it looks like, I mean, it's really the ci-, the city's law director that is to take this kind of action. And so, I mean, I'd really like to see, you know, it's a specific recommendation about, like, what we think, what we think that we, or what the law director thinks that we should be, uh, going after, whether it's, you know, 100% of it, 50% of it, what have you. Um, it really, I don't, to me, it's, it's in the Law Department's court, and I know we'll probably have a follow-up meeting on this, but just wanna make that known, that I don't really know how much of a royal council should really have in this. We could express our, uh, like, uh, desire to wanna see that, I guess we could express that, but it's really shouldn't, to my opinion, it's more of an executive function to go ahead and actually try to get this. Uh, the second thing is that, I just wanna note, it, this, according to all the paperwork, uh, I originally thought it was at the pool when I first heard about this, but it was actually at the communities that this happened. So, there have been groups that have done lunches at the pool, and I think in 2017, I think it was the Valley Church might have done, uh, summer lunches at the pool, but uh, that is not what we're talking about, and it's to make sure citizens know that that is completely separate. So, any, any of the lunches at the pool is not part of this, and there's been many groups donating time and effort and stuff there, and, uh, they've done wonderful stuff, so, uh, that's not this. Uh, but there's a lot of confusion, for sure, because we didn't know about this. Second thing is, there were supposedly 50 kids getting lunch every, uh, weekday for the whole summer, and like, I, I mean, I never even heard about this anywhere, and so I'd really be curious, like, what, who the kids were, how it was talked about, and how many people actually showed up. Not that that matters for the then and now, but I think it's important. And then, the last thing is just, you know, I hate, well, I don't hate to bring this up, but just, I think it should be noted that, uh, one of the participants that we're reimbursing, it potentially is a, um, a daughter of a Norwood City employee, uh, based on the, the invoice that I see here in some of the emails. So, I, that might be okay, and that might, you know, everything might be allowed, but it just, I wish that, especially considering that, if that is true, I'm just looking at the last name, I don't know for sure, but the last name seems to indicate somebody that also works at the Rec Department. Um, it's, it's just even more reason why it should have come, like, they really should have come to council, and this should have been much more transparent. And then the, one last note, too, is that invoices were sent last year, and I don't, um, to the Rec Department, and they weren't turned in to the city auditor's office or anybody else. It actually would have been a little bit easier to take care of this if we would have done it in the fiscal year that the expenses were incurred, uh, versus doing it now, just when it comes to planning and such. So, you know, we have to approve the then and now, but I mean, we, we can't allow, like, stuff like this to continue to happen, uh, 'cause it's happened in the past, and, uh, I feel like we need to just not allow it to happen, and I feel like going with what's put forth in the higher revised code would ensure that it doesn't happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Brayden?
Thanks. Um, so, you got me concerned about my statements. Um, I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, I, my, uh, those were exploratory and not inflammatory statements, so, you know, and, and, and to another point, as, as a youth in Norwood, I attended Victory Park, and I would, I would get these free lunches. I mean, it was a great thing as a, as a child to go to the pool and get these lunches. So, this is not, this is a great thing, only thing is, is we have to pay for it, and so, I just wanna, you got me a little worried about my statements. I didn't mean to, to be inflammatory with my comments, so, I wanna get that out there. And, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm really, um, when we're talking about giving children lunch, I, I'm, I'm a sucker for that, I think it's a great thing, so, but all good points, I agree with everybody Mr. Bonzel hit on it, um, you know, we gotta, we gotta make sure that we're following the law as far as.
In the past, Norwood City Schools got grants, um, federal grants through the federal, um, food program, and they were able to provide lunches, like, at the, in front of the high school, and, um, at Victory and a lot of the places around there, but those grants eventually went away, and, um, so, I guess now, if you get these things, you must have to pay for them, where in the past, um, they were federal grants that the schools had obtained even, and then the Valley did one, the Valley Church did one, one year for free, so. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, and I, as I read this, to go, um, to respond to something that, uh, Mr. Bonzel said, it says, um, that the youth need to be participating in a public and private nonprofit school program. So, was this not, not open to all youth? We don't know. I think there's just a whole lot of unknown here, there's so much, I mean, we can't, we can sit here and guess all we want. Is there any way we could ask Ms. Wallace to come in to council?
That's what I suggested, perhaps putting it in the committee of the whole and, and bring all the parties together.
So that we really know what happened here, because we can guess all night long.
Correct.
But I would also like to add, I do think we need to pass this so that we don't jeopardize any federal funding we may have the opportunity to get in the future.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to consideration of the resolution, and that is a resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate for the general funds recreation key 01-dash-1050 to cover the cost of an invoice for U M C Food Ministries for 2018 of $3,083.60 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Thompson?
I would move we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate for the general funds recreation key 01-dash-1050 to cover the cost of an invoice for U M C Food Ministries for 2018 of $3,083.60 and declaring an emergency. Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate for the general funds recreation key 01-dash-1050 to cover the cost of an invoice for U M C Food Ministries for 2018 of $3,083.60 and declaring an emergency. Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate for the general funds recreation key 01-dash-1050 to cover the cost of an invoice for U M C Food Ministries for 2018 of $3,083.60 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the resolution be passed.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration reports or other requests to address council. Do you have any unfinished business? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I was gonna do this last week, and I didn't, because we had quite a busy meeting, and I really, I just really need to say something. Um, I've heard a lot of criticism about council, about approving the fiscal recovery plan without properly reviewing it. Um, I would have also voted to approve this if I were here, um, to protect the city from any possible penalties due to not being, having this done on a deadline. I wasn't gonna be present at that meeting, and I informed Madam President of this in February. I totally expected to be able to review, review the plan on March 12 meeting, at the very least a draft. This did not happen, so I started asking for a copy draft of this plan. The week before the vote was to come to council, and I was refused this. This was the second year in a row that council did not have adequate time to review this document. It's one of the most important documents, I believe, we're signing here. Um, there are those here who will probably defend what, or defend this, but I don't care, I don't care about the excuses. Council gets the brunt of criticism, and yet it was totally out of our control. Was it the mayor, the auditor, or the state representative's responsibility? I don't know. I really don't care. But I do know is that I was refused a draft of this to look at, and I know that no one who was responsible made sure that council had this document in time to review it and ask questions and have it modified. And I just really needed to say that, and, you know, this is really no way for us to be governing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Thompson?
Um, I know where you're coming from, because I made similar points during the meeting. And, uh, yeah, just, it, it's not, uh, we, we were emailed it at noon the day of, and most of us work, so, you know, there was no time to review, and, uh, and we did, as you said, we, we passed, 'cause I, I don't think any of us wanted to, to run the risk of, uh, going the, the, you know, upsetting whatever balance there may be with the state, so, um, but yes, it, it would be, it would be very thoughtful if, when asked to review major pieces of legislation, if we were given more than a few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonzel?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. You know, I completely agree with both of the previous two speakers, um, the comments about the lack of review time. Uh, it, I think the auditor probably could testify that, and the financial supervisors, that I asked multiple, multiple times, that we've gotta have plenty of time to review, we've gotta have time to review. And apparently with, um, you know, there was, there's always things that come up, as, uh, council member Hanahan stated, there'll be some excuse, some reason why that it didn't get done, and there are reasons why that they say that they, it couldn't get done in time. Um, you know, but it is something that is frustrating, and it's something that I think potentially we might wanna consider, um, either a letter, a resolution, something to the financial supervisors, uh, or the fiscal commission or something, letting them know that, uh, in the future, we won't be approving that without some type of timeframe. I think that would be entirely appropriate. Uh, you know, the responses, well, I'll just say that I think that probably is the best step to go, but it is, I agree completely with the criticisms there that were stated, and it's just unfortunate that we were, again, put in the position that we were.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Is there any other unfinished business? Mr. Thompson?
Do we want to formally put the, um, matter that we just discussed, uh, into committee of the whole?
I think that would be appropriate, if you wanna make that motion.
I would like to make the motion that we put that matter we just discussed in committee of the whole.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Do you wanna try to set the date tonight? Or do you want me to contact the recreation head and see what dates are good for her first?
I think, I think we'd like to have-
Couple of days.
-city administration plus, plus Rick, so.
Are there dates when no one, like, are there dates that are just out for anybody within the next couple of weeks? I'd like to get this resolved before the next council meeting. We do have, like, an extra week in between.
Um, my availability, I don't have availability like May 2nd, 3rd, or 6th, that, that weekend, long weekend, I don't have.
Since, uh, next week is the fifth week, or it's like Monday or Tuesday evening better for people? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I am traveling for work and won't be available at all next week, and I have a previous commitment on the evenings of the 8th and the 9th of the following week.
Okay. I will, um, get in touch with all the parties and see if we can come up with something, what date will work for everybody, um, the Law Department as well, and, um, I will be in touch. Thank you. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. And if you could just ask the city administration to provide any, uh, if this is, I'm guessing these are public record, but any copies of-
It is a public record.
Well, right, but any copies of any, like, reprimands to the personnel employee, if there have been, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
About this matter?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Okay. I will find that out. Any other unfinished business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. A few months ago now, um, the Law Order and the H R Committee reported out on the changes to the rules of council. I know that, um, you've sent, set up a draft, et cetera. I don't know that we've had discussion about it to move towards adoption. Um, I would like to suggest that if there are any outstanding recommendations or feedback, that we get those to you before our next regular meeting. At this point in time, I don't have any outstanding concerns. I do recall a conversation with the clerk of council, giving some feedback on the suggestions around, um, changes to how the minutes are taken, and, um, other than that, I think it's ready to go for formal consideration.
And that is the one, after the Law Department reviewed it, that lays out the steps for going into executive session, the latest, the latest one that was sent out?
Correct. It had both changes to how minutes are taken and executive session.
Okay. Okay. So if anyone has any objections or any suggested changes, please get them to me, and I'll, with that objection, I'll place those on the agenda for adoption at the next meeting. I'll resend those out to everybody if, if it's on the agenda, we'll make sure that we get those out to you. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. So at the last council meeting, Ms. Stevenson had brought up Cincinnati's Tobacco 21 policy change, and that topic was referred to the Housing, Health, and Public Safety Committee. I was just curious if there was an update on either a meeting time or any other work that happened.
Mrs. Hanahan? Thank you, Madam President. No, we're working on a couple of things right now. We had a meeting scheduled that had to be canceled because some, some members were out of town, and we have several things in our, on our agenda right now. So no, that hasn't come up, and I do not have a time for when that will come up at this point.
Thank you.
And as a matter of reference, the ASAP Norwood has been working on this issue. We are working with Interact for Health. There's some background work that needs to be done, and so that, that issue has been in front of ASAP Norwood. I go to those meetings, happy to, you know, let you know any updates. There are, they are on the first Tuesday of the month at 1:00, and so the next one will be May the 7th. Again, there, if you are, when you are ready, Mrs. Hanahan in your committee, we could probably get folks from that committee to come and talk to you about it, but there's definitely some background work that needs to be done before it gets put out there. And like I said, we've been working with Interact for Health on getting a grant, actually, I think they may have gotten a grant, to do some background work on the subject. Yeah, Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to respond to Mr. Bonzel's question. The last meeting, I did also say I received a letter from a resident. I still need to share that out with the rest of council, and I will make sure the committee gets that. I actually got an email today from one of the members of ASAP Norwood asking about when it would be considered, I believe if I'm recalling the email correctly, they do have funding and would like to begin conversation so that they can include our input on how they might use the funding to make the public aware of the opportunity. So I'll make sure I connect the committee members, especially the committee chair, with those residents as well.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. So a while ago, we were provided with some information around how ballot issues are handled in the state of Ohio. In Norwood, we had a ballot initiative, and there was concern around enforcement that was conveyed to us. I don't know that we've had a discussion or have a point of view as a body, but one thing that I found myself reflecting on is that we're expecting people to vote again this year. And one of the personal challenges I've had with how the administration has responded to the last vote residents made is that it seems as though not all votes count in terms of what happens after you vote. And so I'd like to actually suggest that whether it be adding to the soon-to-be-scheduled committee of the whole or referring it to law ordinance and HR, that this body have a chance to discuss how ballot initiatives are handled by the administration, and, and for two, two reasons. One, the mayor has asked us as a body to consider increasing the earnings tax, which would have to be voted on. And at a time in which residents have already voted on something, and there's been indifference, it seems to me, around their choice being enforced by the administration, I think we should have some discussion around how votes are treated and really around a better understanding of administrative perspective on when residents vote on topics of concern. So I'd like to hear their thoughts on whether or not it's appropriate to have a committee of the whole discussion, or if we think this should go to law ordinance and HR or somewhere else.
I think it's up to council. Following the mayor's letter, I did go to the Board of Elections, and I think you have to have petitions in 90 days ahead of time. It's not the same as a, if, if you choose to raise the earnings tax. I have a series of emails that the gentleman sent to me from the Board of Elections about how to do an initiative, but it's not the same process of having, where, of property values, where if you're going to increase property taxes, where you have to pass a resolution and then send it down to the county auditor to figure out what the tax rate should be and all that. It's, it's not nearly that involved. I do have those emails from that gentleman, and I'll be happy to forward them to everyone that, that would give you the process. And I'll check with the mayor to see if he is interested in pursuing that in a committee of the whole to come and speak about that. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not certain what your question is, like what?
I think my question specifically is, what's the best forum for having discussion around how we vote on things and, and treat the outcome of those votes? We, we were made aware, there has been a vote recently in '17 where residents, maybe it was '18, I apologize to not remember off the top of my head, residents voted to get rid of penalties and fines, and that's not been enforced locally. And that could be the prerogative of the administration. Similarly, the administration's asking us to consider something that people would vote on. And so my concern is we, we have varying perspectives when we're asking the public to vote at a time when we're trying to increase engagement and also transparency and really do right by the city. So I think it warrants some discussion on what happens after we vote.
Are you, are you, again, I'm just waiting for clarification. Are you talking about the vote on the marijuana and the lack of, and the-
I'm talking about both opportunities, the vote that just happened and the ramifications and the potential vote that could happen.
On an earnings tax increase?
Correct. That was the, that was the request that was made to this group.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the clerk of council to send a letter to Mayor Williams, asking for proper, for him to instruct us on proper procedures for council members, that council members should follow if we desire to observe the negotiation process with our unions as it moves forward. I believe this would seriously benefit council in understanding why and why we are where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. So I have had multiple citizens at just various times over the past year bring up to me concerns about city, like code enforcement and health, I guess the health code enforcement, building and health code. And essentially, they are concerned that the city doesn't enforce it onto themselves as well, that they're, the same things that they're expecting residents to do. And I, you know, completely agree with them. That seems like there's, could be a concern there. I would like to refer, while Mr. Gears is gonna be at the committee of the whole, I'd like to refer the matter of, the matter to that committee of code enforcement of city buildings to be added. I just wanna have a quick, I mean, essentially, I've talked to the building department in the past, they've said that essentially they're not going to write up city buildings without permission, I mean, for the most part. So I'd like to find out what it would take to get that permission granted for two reasons. One, it's just good that we both, we, everybody's operating on the same rules, and then the second one, it helps council and everybody else to know like what actually needs to get done. So, yeah, I would just hope that we can have that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to announce that there will not be an Economic Development and Community Engagement Committee meeting at our regularly scheduled time, which is typically first Thursday, as I just shared before, I will be out of town. As I confer with the committee members, we may have a later meeting date, but as of now, there will not be a meeting that first Thursday.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to just provide a quick update on the state highway cleanup that happened, I guess about a week and a half ago, in partnership with ODOT and the city of Norwood. The city of Cincinnati also is a partner for their specific areas. But for the lateral, we had a couple spots along the lateral that volunteers came and cleaned up. We had 15 volunteers from Keep Cincinnati Beautiful. The city actually provided a bus for volunteers so that they could, we had a public works crew in a bus so that we could just take volunteers to all the different sites that kind of needed attention. And it was a very successful effort, so we had a whole dump truck full of trash that was collected. Unfortunately, I'm sure that there is new trash that has replaced what's collected, but it's great that we at least were able to, to get what was, what we could find there. One of the things that was really interesting is that they were, I mean, essentially they were very happy to see the bus that was there. It was, they've never used a bus before to transport volunteers to a site, and so the volunteers that were at other sites, the non-Norwood sites, they were definitely envious of that, and, you know, just the feedback was gone that they would like to see buses in the future, if possible, from the city of Cincinnati for their future cleanups when it comes to the state highway cleanup. So such, we didn't know it, but we kind of established a new best practice, so I wanted to thank the city administration for taking a leadership there and making sure that that happened.
Thank you. As I was leaving the not hole opening day, I saw the dump truck come back with all of the bags of garbage and the bus and everything, so looked like it was pretty successful. Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Is there any other new business? I do have two pieces of good news, I think. This weekend, Saturday and Sunday, Public Works will be having their tire and Freon recycling so that Norwood residents can go down to Public Works and take tires or any appliances that have Freon in them. You know, you cannot put those out to the curb unless the Freon is removed. So if you bring those appliances down to Public Works, there's a gentleman that is certified in Freon removal. He removes the Freon, recycles it, and then we can also recycle the appliance. We also can take tires, and those count towards our recycling totals as well. So that's this weekend. I think there are banners hanging up down at Public Works, but you do have to be a Norwood resident to take part in that. I'm also the city's representative to OKI, attend those meetings regularly, and we were given an estimate of the impact of the new gasoline tax and the increase in the permissive tax for license plates. And so it is estimated that in fiscal year 20, that the city of Norwood will receive in the restricted funds of state highway funds and permissive tax funds, an additional approximately That's a good start to some roads. In fiscal year 21, the difference is supposed to be, apparently it's being phased in, an additional $349,000. So I have the copy of all of the counties in Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana that are part of the OKI Regional Council of Governments and how that will affect those governmental units, if you're interested in it. I do have that here, I'd be happy to send that out to you, so. A bit of good news. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't wanna break that. I wanted to remind residents and invite the members of council to join us for the Norwood Ward One Community Council meeting. That's this Thursday from 7:00 to 8:00 at the cafeteria level of the community center. I have reached out to some of our council committee chairs. If you have updates you'd like to share, you're welcome to come out and do that as we cover your topic of the city. We'll also have some residents there providing updates on work they're doing as well. So we try to stay pretty tight, just 7:00 to 8:00. Folks can linger if they want to. So I just wanted to remind everyone, fourth Thursday, so we'll be there.
And what's the date again?
This Thursday, the 25th.
Thank you. Any other, thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. So just wanted to let people know, in case you haven't heard, about the Fourth Annual High Five Parade. People that watch council meetings regularly will know that I bring this up every year because it's a wonderful event, but it's essentially a parade, it's on April 27th, a Saturday, from, the event's 11:00 to 1:00. So the parade starts at the corner of Mills and Carter Avenues, and then it goes along around in West Norwood. And essentially, it's just a bunch of kids that, well, kids, adults, and everybody else that, they make up all these different decorations and balloons and bubbles and other things, and essentially, it's just spreading joy and cheer, like a big high five to the community. It's always, every year, residents, you know, when residents hear the noise coming down or hear Ron Murphy and the police cruiser, you know, they come out and look and just have a great time. And so it's a wonderful time for the community, wonderful time for the kids. It'll culminate, it'll end at noon at Victory Park, and so there'll be like an after-party there where they'll usually have food and some different games and other things that'll happen there. So definitely look forward to that and hope people come out. So again, Saturday, April 27th from 11:00 to 1:00.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other new business? We have no further communications, we dealt with that earlier. We do have one absent member. Mr. Bonzel?
I'm, do we need to excuse the clerk as well, or just?
Please?
Do we need to exclude the clerk as well?
We can include them.
I think we should, yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absent council member and the clerk of council.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson? Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, I just wanna make a note of our clerk of council's impeccable attendance. I think, I might be wrong, I think this is the first meeting that he has missed since he is, became clerk of council again back in 2016. So very appreciate his diligence, and I know that he could not plan around the trip going to Washington DC with his children to school, so I understand that completely. But yeah, it's great that he's here so much and happy to excuse him today.
And thank you to Mr. Clark for filling in admirably tonight. Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to excuse the two absent members. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that be adjourned.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.